Today, I would ask you to please come feed it up in the name of our faithful and honest understanding. And team and bless our super teams, his administration, and every other leader in our district. And we ask all your prayers and sun and moon.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, invisible but everything just.
And Mr. Johnson, if you would introduce your contention, you'd be out here today.
Good evening. Good evening. We are gonna be, we have staff and students that we're gonna be recognizing today. We're gonna start with our first grade. We have Emery Emerson. Is she here? Emery Emerson. Well, she was selected Student of the Month, and Ms. Bradshaw stated that Emery is always respectful and kind to all. She consistently tries her best and participates in class. And our other Student of the Month for first grade is Callum Young. And Ms. Bradshaw stated that Callum has consistently shown kindness and respect to adults and his peers. He is a hard worker and is always ready to lend a hand. Congratulations, Callum Young. Now for second grade. We have Kinley Fields. And Ms. Elder selected Kinley. She says because she's an awesome example of being responsible, honest, trustworthy, and kind. Kinley comes to the school excited to learn something new every day. She is a good friend to all of her classmates and is willing to help them out at any time. Next, we have Jackson Chandler. Ms. Elder stated that Jackson, because he's a perfect example of our ned, which stands, never gives up, encourages others, and does his best at all times. Congratulations.
Go, Bo.
For third grade. We have Hutch Taylor. And Ms. Murphy, I have your statement. If you would, please come. I'm gonna let you tell why, because I did not bring that with me. And I'm glad you're here.
I have a lot to say, I could say about Hutch, but one of the things that how eager he gets to learn every single day, how eager he gets to help others, he finishes an assignment, and then he goes and helps whoever needs help in the classroom. And Hutch is inquisitive, and he wants to learn. He comes happy and eager every single day, has a curiosity way beyond when I stop. He's still learning about the topic that I stopped teaching about. So I wish I had a classroom full of Hutch Taylors, but I'm proud of you, Hutch, and keep up the good work.
We have Charlie Woods.
Well, Hutch's nickname is the sponge or the recorder. Hers is the investigative zoologist. She is happy to learn facts at home, come back and share them with us, and relate them to what we're learning about. She is a hard, hard worker, and she just gives a hundred percent every day.
So, thank you.
And I'm a spinal.
All right, for fourth grade, we have Cash Grinsby. And Ms. Walker selected Cash, said because he, of his eagerness to learn, his cooperative spirit, excellent behavior, and drive to do his best on all things set before him. And Ms. Bickham selected Hadi Crook. And she was selected because she's always first, the first student to volunteer to help me out around the classroom. She's very, she's a very hard worker who remains on task during class, and even helps out her group partners when she can. I can always count on her to do the right thing when no one is looking. I commend both her behavior and academic character. Now. For our staff that's gonna be recognized, I wanna start with Ms. Lancaster. For Teacher of the Month. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Lancaster has been with the district for thirty-nine years, and I can say that I almost personally know Ms. Lancaster. She had my boys, or one of my boys, in her first grade class, and now he's getting ready to graduate college this Friday. So that just lets you know how long she's been here and the impact that she's had on students. She was hired by the district, she said, and they took a chance on her, a young graduate from UT Tyler, week before school started. And she says, "I've been a challenge through many administration, staff changes, curriculum adoptions, educational mandates." She said, "I chose to teach first grade because the students learn so much in the school year. We always are working hard on new skills, and their minds are absorbing as much information as possible. My greatest joy is still watching my first graders discover reading." Next would be our Parent Professional of the Month. It's Ms. DeAngela Watson. She's been with the district and in education for five years. She said, "I became a reading interventionist because I believe that reading is the key to opening up a new world of possibilities. My goal is to instill a lifelong love of reading in my students as my teachers did for me." Now, for my right hand. Our auxiliary Staff of the Month, which is my secretary. I told her that we were gonna have some music and lights. But she's been with the district for twenty-five years, and she says she likes helping others, and God provided her this job, and she tried to do her best. And I can say that without her, I don't know where I would be. If I had her, I'd probably be pulling it out. But she's a great supporter. She's able to do things when we're not there, and she takes it, she runs with it, and she makes sure that the school is staying on top where it's supposed to be, even if I'm sleeping. So, but anyway, congratulations to you.
My little menu. Not a menu, okay. Hold on, hold on. All right, so I have the privilege of teaching four hundred kids in this district music, and the kindergarten is the highlight of my day. They keep on my nose, they keep me laughing, and they always have something surprising to say or do. So, we are going to share with you our favorite song. What's the name of it?
Watermelon.
Watermelon.
I love it. I said that, I said that, I said that.
And I will tell you, this is an old-school, all-age favorite. The kids wanna sing it all year long. I know it's Christmas time, but we're gonna sing about cold watermelon and a hot summer day. So, here we go. You ready?
Yeah.
All right.
Watermelon, watermelon yummy.
Watermelon, watermelon yummy.
I got the watermelon in my tummy, cool and crispy when it's sunny. Watermelon, watermelon yummy.
Watermelon, watermelon yummy.
Watermelon, watermelon yummy.
I got the watermelon in my tummy, cool and crispy when it's sunny. Watermelon, watermelon yummy.
One, two, three, sing some for me. Four, five, six, your fingers might get sticky. Seven, eight, nine, the taste is divine. Watermelon, watermelon getting in my belly. Watermelon, watermelon getting in my belly. Watermelon, watermelon yummy. Watermelon, watermelon yummy. I got the watermelon in my tummy, cool and crispy when it's sunny. Watermelon, watermelon yummy. Pink, watermelon sweet, watermelon juicy. Watermelon getting in my belly. Fresh, watermelon sweet, watermelon yummy. Watermelon getting in my belly. Watermelon, watermelon yummy. Watermelon, watermelon yummy. I got the watermelon in my tummy, cool and crispy when it's sunny. Watermelon, watermelon yummy. I got the watermelon in my tummy, cool and crispy when it's sunny. Watermelon, watermelon yummy.
All right. In the spirit of the season, we can't think like Christmas. So, are you ready?
Yeah.
I can hear them jingling.
Jingle bells, jingle bells.
All right.
Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. All the planets do have one or two things to say. Hey, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. All the planets do have one or two things to say. Hey.
Before we say goodbye, Ms. Amelia, come here, honey. She has something she wants to invite you to.
I wanna invite you to the Christmas party next week.
Wednesday and Thursday is the Christmas program. Wednesday will be kindergarten through second grade. Thursday will be third and fourth grade at the junior high at 6:30 PM. It's gonna be a really great time, and the show should be pretty spectacular. So, you ready to say goodbye?
We wish you a merry Christmas.
We wish you a merry Christmas.
We wish you a merry Christmas and a happy new year.
We wish you a merry Christmas.
We wish you a merry Christmas.
We wish you a merry Christmas and a happy new year.
Thank you, everybody.
Real quick, I'll just hit the highlights. Most of these items were things you've seen. I'll hit the things that were progressing pretty good and a couple of new items. Hopefully we'll finish up our chores on the roof of the junior house with the break. We had our first annual elevator inspection on our lift at the elementary. That's required by law, so we continue to do that and make sure there's not any problems. Everything checked out fine. Over Thanksgiving break, we started painting the transportation tech buildings out on Highway 59, going from the draft olive color to the major floor trim and all our outdoor buildings, our hands, consistent, kind of rounds it up too. On our fall projects, we're expecting our door vendor to be working over the Christmas break, so we expect to actually have some progress there, which we haven't done anything yet. And KLC is about to finish up installing the access control points and security cameras. We expect to do a walk-through this week. I'll be Jay, Chief Pearl, myself, and Jack Smith with them, and Barney Hicups, and there was one today, 'cause they cracked the window to fill the house, on the door, KLC did, so today they'll pay a head-up price. I told them, I said, "That's three other vendors, last vendor, the film tent, and the logo." So, but that's the nature of the job, I guess, but basically they'll take care of it.
Are they the ones that were supposed to fix the doors by the gym at the hospital?
So, Soar is the vendor that does actual doors. On fall projects, the lighting on the elevator rooms, we've got all the one section lit. And under new projects, a couple of things we've added to our list. We're gonna add a awning to the back of the concession stand where the patio is. You know, it's one of those things in the tour you experience, you don't realize how bad a problem it was, and some people walk around to it. You know, late fall games, it's dark back there, there's no lights, so we're gonna add an awning with just a twelve by twenty foot, which is the same size of that, that concrete patio pads, twelve by ten, twelve foot gives us overhang, and then we'll add lighting underneath it. So, 'cause our concession stand folks actually work out there, manning grills. So, it's a need, so we added that. It's a let, come in, home hall, and we're under $5,000. And the lighting we're doing in the house. And we're adding a walk-in gate at the stadium. So, we're the nice part of the gate, where the columns and the metal fencing. Wanna go to, as you're looking at, to the regular fencing and put in a walk-in gate, so we can close all the drive-through gates and have, keep them locked, and keep the walk-in gate open for people to have access to the track and field for recreation, where not, no one has access to drive-throughs. And then game time, when games are functioning, that gate can be locked and the maintenance can be open. But right now, the maintenance unlocked, so people can get in and open them wide open. We don't wanna do that. So, that can be an in-house project, as far as setting the post and redoing the fence, and probably get a gate that should not be regularized. And hopefully have that done by KLC.
We have a question. It was brought up, maybe about putting some type of security system or something at the gate, walk-through, or is that something that we're starting?
That's something Chief Pearl was gonna talk to us in executive session about.
Along the same thought, too, we added several more cameras down there. That's part of the KLC job. And we have a 360 camera in the parking lot, so we can actually see. So, that aspect has been done, but what you're talking about is something that's more Chief Pearl's pick away.
What about, um, flags on these gates?
Looked into that. Those, um, we got flags about sixty dollars a piece, and the brackets are about sixty dollars a piece. We're looking at a hundred, twenty dollars for every one of them. Kind of put that on low, money being tight. I think it's an option for the future, 'cause I do think I like the look. But I know if we do what we, if we did it right, and did everything at the stadium, and did it around campuses, we're down about several thousand dollars. But I think that's worth talking about in the future. But since we're towards the football season, I didn't think it was anything to progress right away.
Okay, we have number five, action item, consideration of board operation, operating procedures.
This just gives the board an opportunity to conduct an annual review of the board operating procedures. And, you know, that's just part of the board operating procedures that we have an annual review. So, you got an opportunity to discuss any kind of changes you may want to have.
I appreciate having you on here, and remind myself for going into procedures, laws, and all this.
I'm with a motion that we continue using our current board operating procedure without revision.
All right, we got a motion by Mr. Ramon, second by Mr. Williams, all in favor. All right, number six, action item, consideration of approval of JISB emergency operations plan.
Chief Pearl. Did you guys have questions concerning, I know y'all got a couple there to go?
Yes, I just changed that. Those two, man, we did it. Just put Rusty's name instead of mine, and give the board number, and then we'll change it.
Make that edit, and when we get it finalized, that'll be there. Basically, Jack streamlined the emergency operations plan. It's not as cluttered. There's a bunch of tick toils in there now that are very helpful. So, there's a lot that he's done to change it as far as just the functionality of it and efficiency of it, but there's not a lot that's gonna change as far as what we do.
Content-wise, operations-wise, everything is very similar. We might tweak a word there that our language in the district a little bit better, but the biggest undertaking was streamlining and making it singular format from start to finish. So, all the indexes, all the appendix, everything looks the same. And from there, was able to kind of pull out a campus-specific working copy. And so, each campus, I think, much condensed how easy the steps to take. And additionally, with the E3 app, the campuses have a better understanding of what's happening here and how to use the information. This is commercial.
Questions?
Thank you, Jack. I'm going to put through the emergency operations plan after that.
I have a motion by Mr. Ramon, second by Mr. Martin, all in favor. All right, number seven, action item, consideration of approval to move the date of the regular march, board meeting from March 11th to March 4th.
This would just provide the board an opportunity to get the board meeting off of there. We can spring back.
We have a motion by Mr. Bonner, second by Ms. Cooper, all in favor. Okay, number eight, the hearing, public hearing of the twenty-three, twenty-four school first rating.
This is our school first rating for, it's the twenty-four, twenty-five rating. It's based on the twenty-three, it's called the twenty-three, twenty-four report. It's based on twenty-two, twenty-three data. Go back a year or so. But they have twenty-one indicators, and the maximum score is a hundred, passing score is seventy, and let's see, we scored a hundred, so a rating of a superior achievement. And let's see, flip over to page three, you see the, that's for the end of the twenty-one indicators, or, there's a score there. And then, on the determination of the ratings, in that little part, it's one of the first core indicators, if your answers are yes, you score a no on any one of those four, then you fail automatically. And then, the way you schedule is there, ninety to hundreds, eighty, eighty-nines will be, and so on and so forth. Y'all have any questions? Anybody have any questions?
Team effort, so, gotta get a good team.
Okay, action item, consideration of approval of Santa Gilda.
Mike, you wanna talk about our, uh, budgets? We have two budget amendments. You should have a copy of them just in front of you. First one is for eight thousand dollars. It comes out, hopefully it's coming on the front balance. It is, we're having, the junior high is sponsoring the district U of M, and to put on the, they needed about eight thousand dollars in expenses that we did not budget for. So, this puts it in there. And the, this cost is split between the, what's it, six districts?
Six other schools?
Yeah, well, so we'll split it seven ways, and, uh...
So we'll split it, uh, seven ways, and, uh, we'll just give them a set of, they'll be less than, uh, quarter of a, uh, a little over a thousand dollars, so, uh, will be our part when we get reimbursed. And then the second one is, uh, school uniforms. We ordered the uniforms in the spring of twenty-four. They didn't come in until after, uh, uh, we didn't get the invoice till September, I believe, paid in September. So it was after the, the budget rolled over, and we did not have it in there to, we did not, uh, re-enter it in there to pay for the, the twenty-three, twenty-four uniforms, that's what, uh, this is. Twenty... Nine hundred dollars to, to the, so... Any questions, any, Mike? It's kind of a rotation, but, um, not every year, we don't buy, it's a lot out there every year. I'm not sure how many we bought that time, but that's a lot. We keep chucking money. Can you get one for us? Yeah, it is.
All right, I got a motion by Mr. Bonner, seconded by Mr. Ramona, all in favor, seven oh. All right, number ten, executive session is provided for by the Texas Department of Defense, Section five, five point zero seven four, to discuss personnel, commanded by the Texas Department of Defense, Section five, five point zero seven six, to discuss the deployment of specific procedures for the implementation of security personnel training. Section five, five point zero seven two, discussing purchase, exchange, lease value of real property.